Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, I'm going to move right into the public hearing. Item B on the agenda for the North Cedar Elementary Project. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of the hearing for the proposed public improvements for the North Cedar Elementary Project. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on May 24, 2017. The board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment or offer comment on this public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Moving on to item C on the agenda, the public hearing for Orchard Hill Elementary Project. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of hearing for the proposed public improvements for the Orchard Hill Elementary Project. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on May 24, 2017. The board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone that would like to offer comments regarding the Orchard Hill Elementary Hearing none, I will close this hearing. Moving on to item D on the agenda, Robinson Dresser Baseball Field Improvement Project. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of the hearing for the proposed public improvements for the Robinson Dresser Baseball Field Improvements. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on May 24, 2017. The board will now hold a hearing for the Robinson Dresser Baseball Field. Is there anyone that would like to offer comments at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to close this public comment hearing. Moving on now to item E on the agenda, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan, seconded by Jim. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item F on the agenda, that we have no public comment at this time. Now, G on the agenda is the secretary's financial report.
Okay, if we could call up the presentation for the May financials. There we go, thank you. We'll start off with the general fund for the month of May, and you can see that we had revenue of just over $3.9 million for the month with expenditures of about $4.6 million, giving us a netting fund balance of $11,563,949. You can see where the dollars are broken down, checking account and the two investment accounts that we have, and then you can also see compared to about it. One year ago, we were about $700,000 under, or we were a year ago. That's, we've been running, tracking pretty much close to that all year long with, from a cash perspective. In the management fund, we have revenue of $51,948 for the month. The big piece of that was the rebate that the district received for its workers' compensation program. We receive a rebate at the end of the year for the previous year based on claims and usage of that, so we had a nice rebate. We did not receive a rebate the previous year, so that, always nice when we can add a little bit to the account. Expenditures for the month, just a little over $2,600 for an ending balance of $939,617, and that's very, very similar to where we were one year ago. Capital Projects Fund, this is the fund, is just to remind everybody what we're using to expense the Aldrich Elementary Project as well as the North Cedar and Orchard Hill projects which will be upcoming. Revenue for the month of $10,900, that's all interest we received on our investments, and then expenditures of $727,540, that is all for the Aldrich Elementary Project. So our ending balance is $30.946 million. Statewide 1-cent local option sales tax, you can see we had revenue of $345,893, that's our regular monthly draw plus a little bit of interest. Expenditures for the month, $12,625 with some cleanup on some previous projects that we were using statewide 1-cent sales tax dollars for, and then the transfer to pay the, both the 2015 series revenue bond as well as the refinanced revenue bonds that we took this year, school year. That was $360,875, so our ending fund balance, $6.694 million at the end of May. You will not see a transfer out into the Fund 40 for the month of June because we typically do that over 11 months throughout the school year. Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, revenue of $233,652, expenditures of just under $50,000, so an ending balance of $4.728 million. You can see that that's up a little bit from the previous year, but that's sort of a planned situation that we talked about a year ago, that we were curtailing back on some of the Pebble projects a little bit in anticipation of the upcoming construction projects that we're working with at the three elementary schools. Debt Service Levy, you can see we had interest revenue of $921, and there's that transfer in from Fund 33 to help make our debt service payment. No expenditures, the debt service payment is actually due June 1st, so you can say our ending balance was $2.605 million, and the vast majority of all of that will now be used to make our June 1 debt service payment for those two funds that I talked about earlier. Student Activity, pretty typical month for May, $80,558 in, $94,114 out, ending balance of $561,396. You can see that's down about $90,000 from the previous year. Our Agency and Transfer Accounts, and what those are used for is for different things that come into the account, that booster clubs or community members may give dollars to the school district for various causes to help programming. Revenue of $10,398 with expenditures of $1658, and you can see our balance is $237,219 for that. Food Service Account, $255,820 in, $198,165 out, ending balance is $729,861. That, take a real hard look at that, it won't be that high. We're going to be buying some equipment this summer, and so, and that's long overdue for the Food Service Account as they've had some pieces of equipment that they've had in their operation in excess of 40 years. And so, we're going to use some of the proceeds that we've built up over the past few years, and so over the next few months, you'll see that balance sort of drop down, but that's a planned balance reduction. The Student Coffee Shop Fund at the high school, you can see that ending balance is $8331. There should be a little bit of cleanup in the June report, but otherwise that'll be dormant then until the kids come back in late August. The River Hills Consortium Account, again, just as a reminder to everybody that we're the fiscal agent for the River Hills Consortium, so we've set up a separate fund to float all those dollars through. Third Quarter Tuition came in in May, out quite a bit, and that was $879,000, and then we did pay out just under, just a little over $177,000. So our ending balance at the end of May is $701,895. That will all go out here in June. And with that, I would entertain any questions that the board may have.
I had a couple, Doug. So, for the money we saw going to construction of the new elementary school, what part of money does, pays for things like chairs and desks, things that aren't part of the...
We have dollars budgeted within that project for that, so that'll be a combination of probably statewide 1-cent sales tax dollars, because if you'll recall, all three projects are funded from both the bond proceeds as well as some statewide 1-cent sales tax dollars that we're holding in reserve, and then we'll also be using some Pebble dollars which we've also have built in our 10-year Pebble Plan, Master Plan for that as well. So we do have budgeted amounts for all three projects within those two different funds.
I just didn't know if chairs were part of that project, considered part of the project, or...
You will actually be seeing, we're going to, we're meeting next week to start the process of planning for the equipment, furniture purchases. That will really pick up steam when the staff comes back in September with the goal of right, around the first of the year, just right after the first of the year, board approving those bids for all that equipment, so that we make sure that it's here in plenty of time before the new building opens up in August.
And then, a question I just thought of when we were going through the student coffee shop, is there a legal maximum amount that can be in that fund before people start worrying that it is profit?
No.
Okay.
We consider it a, it's, we consider it a student activity account, but at the same time, we have to operate it as an enterprise fund or a business activity because of what it does. Iowa Code kind of requires us to put it in a 60-series fund account, but no, there's no requirement as to how large that balance might be. I would hope that if we thought it got a little too large, we might hint to the students some items they may be able to use those dollars for, but at this point, we're not even remotely close to having to worry about that problem.
Will that same thing be true for the North Cedar Coffee Shop when they have that going?
We haven't established any funding for that, but we'll have to, when that, when that coffee shop gets off the ground and starts running, we'll have to, we'll either incorporate it into this fund and sort of separate it out internally and rename the fund, or we'll give it a second designation. We haven't made that determination yet.
And I just have a follow-up to Doug's first question. It's probably more informational for the public. Doug, is it not true that when we talk about project costs, as we've, you know, we've had some talk in the public where they compare us to other school districts and things like that, when we do budgeting, you typically have an all-project cost where sometimes there are districts who only do it, say, construction costs, and they don't have those furniture costs included in there when they talk about how much their school costs. So I just think, if you could explain a little bit briefly about that for the public, we've had people sometimes try and compare us to other districts and compare apples to oranges when they're talking about construction budgets. Does my...
Yep, I understand.
So I just like, I think this is a good opportunity, since Doug brought it up, to maybe just give a brief explanation for the public who are watching, that when they think about those things, they have to be very specific and direct how they're looking at those and comparing them.
Well, when we went to the community over the last few years to ask about, for the elementary projects, if you go onto the district's website, you'll see a proposed cost of what the budget was, and if you'll look on that line item, there was a furniture line item in that. There was a design fees included in that, there were some other soft costs included in that. We know we have to move some portables, that was included in that, asbestos abatement. We had, we had kind of done an all-in sort of number. I can't speak for what my colleagues and other school districts do, but we felt on our end that this was, that we wanted to be as transparent as possible in the community as to what the costs were going to be associated with those three projects, so that's the way we established it.
And I can speak to that as well. When we've talked with other superintendents across the state, they will say that they have just listed maybe the construction cost. They've left out the design development, maybe the land purchase price, the furniture price, even sometimes the utility cost to get to the site. And that sometimes can be deceiving because you might look at one project costing X amount of dollars versus what we are showing, but we want to make sure it is fully inclusive of everything from when they first start moving dirt to when we move in the first day with students. That way, it is, like Doug said, most transparent to our community.
Thank you for explaining it. I think, I like the way we do it, and I, I think it's just important as people look at these projects and anything we do in the future to remember that when you start doing comparisons, you need to make sure you have every, all the information included and every line item budget in there, so that it's an accurate comparison. So, thank you.
Good questions, good. Any other questions? Hearing none, then we'll put the secretary's financial report on file for audit. Moving on to Communications under item H. We don't have any communications, anyone? Okay, good. Now, on to the approval of the Milk, Bread, and Milk bid. Doug?
Okay, if we can pull that PowerPoint file up, thank you. We have the annual bid approval for the Milk and Bread for the 2017-18 school year. That's kind of hard to say, really. And on the Milk side, we sent bids out, we had, there's really only a couple of different vendors that we can pick from, and you can see them on the screen. And what we have done historically for quite a number of years now is we have accepted a bid based on an escalator clause. And how that escalator clause works is that the pricing is based on the central milk market order, and that is established by the United States Department of Agriculture. And you can see, so based on the month of May, price per 100-pound for butter fat, the low quote would be Anderson Erickson Dairy out of Des Moines for all the items that you see there. The spread stays the same each month, so if you think two or three months down the road, Prairie Farms amount would stay the same and Anderson's would fluctuate, that's not the case. That spread is consistent throughout the school year. We've had very, very good luck with that. We track what the, what the price of milk does historically over the past, do a little forecasting on what we think it's going to do over the next school year, and pretty much year after year, we're better off doing the escalator clause than doing firm. And so, our recommendation for the Milk is to continue with Anderson Erickson. They've been the dairy provider for the district nine out of the last 10 years. So, and then on the Bread side, there are really only two vendors again that we can work with, and only, we only received one bid back, and that is from the Bimbo Bakeries out of Dubuque. And we've used that firm, I think, three out of the last four years. This became a little more problematic for us when Wonder Bread shut their plant down here in Waterloo a few years ago. And so, our recommendation would be to accept a quote from Bimbo Bakeries, which is a division of Sara Lee.
Okay.
So you kind of have a better context of where that. And at the pricing you see on the screen, all the products have to meet USDA nutritional requirements, so the spec for a loaf of whole-grain bread is a half a sheet of paper long, to give you an idea. And that is a firm price for the entire school year.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Bread and Milk bid?
I move to accept the Milk bid from Anderson Erickson Dairy, Des Moines, Iowa, and the Bread bid from Bimbo Bakeries, Dubuque, Iowa, for the 2017-2018 school year as presented.
Thank you, Suzy. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Yep.
So we had no bid from Pan, the other one. They just chose not to...
They chose, they basically chose not to bid.
Okay, and we know that for sure, it didn't get, their, their, their bid did not go into Spain or something.
Lloyd double-checked, and they chose not to bid.
Perfect.
And they did not bid last year.
And they did not bid last year, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Plus you. Moving on to item J, approval of the Chromebook bid, and just, just a reminder that Doug sent out a new bid in our board packet, or by email later this afternoon, so it should be in your board packet.
So if we could pop that PowerPoint up, and first off, I do need to update the board on this. We did have one bid that is on the screen that you see that was not on the information that we sent out in the packet on Friday afternoon. The bid from Herb Technology Solutions out of Cedar Rapids got hung up in the district's spam mail. I can assure you that the email did arrive by the appropriate due date and time, and the bid itself is, the attachment was dated appropriately. So it is, it is a legit, legitimate bid, it just was hung up in our district's spam mail account, and we were not aware of that till late Friday afternoon until after the board packet went out. So I sent out an updated sheet to all the board members this morning, and you can see we received four quotes for, this would be for 825 Samsung 3 Chromebooks, same units that we purchased one year ago. The pricing includes installation of the operating system and then unit testing, and what that means is, they will literally take the unit out of the box, turn it on, make sure it boots up, load the operating system on it, and then check it to make sure that it connects and everything is working appropriately. And so, our recommendation would be to accept a quote from Herb's Technology Solutions out of Cedar Rapids. This is for year five of our district technology plan for Chromebooks, and those would be paid for the physical plant and equipment levy, the majority of them would be, there's a little bit of money in the instructional support levy for that as well. And then, there will be another bid coming to the board, I believe, next month for iPads and some other equipment associated with year five.
Okay, good. Do I have a motion to approve the Chromebook bid?
I move to accept the bid for 825 Chromebooks from Herb's Technology Solutions, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, at a total cost of $168,300 plus shipping.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Do those come with warranties? What type of warranty do they come with?
They have one-year standard warranty.
Okay.
And where are we at in the process of, everyone, everyone that should now has a Chromebook, and then where are, when we recycle them and they come down, like our seniors leave, they have an opportunity to, no?
No, we have to go through a public bidding process. We just can't have individuals purchase a computer that they've been using.
Okay, okay.
So we have to dispose of those in a proper way. We know that the Chromebooks, we anticipate them lasting about three years, and that's why the cycle is for seventh graders get new Chromebooks and 10th graders get new Chromebooks. That's roughly about 400, 425 of these Chromebooks, and then there's additional Chromebooks that will go to the elementary. So, we have multiple different components in place to make sure that these are recycled appropriately.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, when we approved the Chromebooks and decided to go with that purchase, we did say there would be a kind of continual, maybe not continual, but frequent or infrequent review of whether that was still the right device, and we felt that was, you know, still what we wanted to stick with for our students. Can you tell us briefly how that is done, how often it's done?
Well, what I can tell you is that in year two, we switched to a different manufacturer for Chromebooks because the staff had requested some changes and some additional options. It hadn't worked so well, and those Chromebooks weren't holding up to the daily use that the students asked of it. And our kids are really pretty good about that. We do, we don't have, even remotely close to what we would consider to be an excessive problem with damage. In visiting with my colleagues and other school districts that are doing this, our, our kids are pretty good about how they, they take care of that equipment, and we're very appreciative of that. And so, then, we went back to the Samsungs, and then last year, if you'll recall, we ordered some Dells as a, as a pilot. And when, when quizzed IT about, you know, are we going to go Dells or not, and they said, no, they felt that the Chromebooks were holding up a little bit better than the Dells were, and they're, it's a little less expensive to buy the Samsungs as well. That's what I can tell you, I can't speak for, for anybody else.
We have really two components to this. We have our IT department, and we have our Instructional Technology Department, and our Instructional Technology Department has an R&amp;D kind of research and development budget as well. That allows them to go out and find out what instructional technology will have the greatest impact for student learning, so that's always being tested to find out are there other products that would be beneficial and make more sense than maybe what we're currently utilizing. And the other thing I would say is, it's becoming less important what the actual hardware might be, it's really becoming more important on the cloud-based computing and some of the remote server accesses, because you are going to be able to run really robust applications from any device regardless of the size or the power of that device. And I think that's what's exciting, is we continue to look at the future.
And, and one more comment on the Samsung devices, our entire Instructional Technology Department, we're a warranty station for these devices, so if we do have a device that'll fail within the warranty period, our team can take care of that. We don't have to send them back to any place, we do all our own stuff in-house, we have a direct account with Samsung for parts as necessary. So that's really worked pretty slick from a repair perspective for our kids.
Okay.
I would say there's also a constant review and evaluation of what, what is it our, our staff want those, those devices to be able to do based on the curriculum that they have, based on the activities they want kids to do. So I know Brian Unruh and his people continually are communicating with teachers and evaluating whether the Chromebook still is the, the device of choice for that, and like Andy said, the things that, that we're asking kids to do or that teachers are looking for, a lot of that is becoming much more cloud-based through the internet, the things that, so we don't need the, the storage capacity on a single device, and so, I, I think it's still, for the money especially, is, is the best, the best choice at this point.
So just following up on that, I'm going to offer an anecdotal observation. I was cleaning out backpacks this week, and I was kind of shocked and a little disappointed at the amount of paper and worksheets that I had from this past semester that obviously sat in a locker but came home from multiple subjects. So, considering we have Chromebooks and Schoology and Power School, I guess, do we take the opportunity to maybe go back to our staff and work with them to say, you know, can you look at what you've done this year? I mean, I'd be happy to, I took a picture of it. I mean, it's, it's a great visual to see, I'm shocked that we're still using that much paper. And, and some of it I looked through, there are times that's appropriate. A lot of this, I'd be amazed if there's not a way to do it electronically, considering there's online classes, you know, that really don't need any paper. So, I would love for us to have some way that we bring that printing budget down, because this was for one backpack, and I haven't gone through the other one yet, so I bet by the end of it, I, I bet I have a ream of paper, which is a lot of paper for one kid.
We would agree, and I think most of our staff would agree, and it's really neat, we showed some of the data at the board admin retreat that showed our movement to the weekly columns, to the monthly columns from the far right of the never columns, and the amount of use that technology is playing now in our classes continues to increase, focusing on, again, the, the critical thinking, the collaboration, the communication, really those core four Cs. So that continues to shift in the right direction. Do we still need to continue to work on that to improve it? Yes, and I think everybody would say that. We still have some, some areas that we have large amounts of printing, that we know that we continue to focus on some training, some work with our building instructional technology leaders to be able to help provide people with more comfortability with some of those pathways and avenues with technology.
I would say that is, that's a work in progress. You know, at the same time, I think we're, Doug could probably attest that our printing budget has gone down over the last couple, three years as a result of that. We now have the ability to track our printing costs not only at the district level, the building level, even down to the department and the individual teacher level, and so, that's something I know our principals are monitoring and looking at and communicating with people that they think are a little bit out of whack with the amount of paper that they're using, but it is a work in progress.
And I'm sure some of it, as I was looking through, I mean, and some of them, I'm like, I'm shocked, I mean, some of the teachers, I was like, I'm shocked this has much, this much paper for your class. So, I think sometimes they maybe just aren't aware of it, and seeing that kind of a visual at the end really just, I mean, I wouldn't have thought about it until this week, so...
Now, I would say, I was opposite.
That's good.
I was opposite. Now, we have different age spans, but I had nothing.
Great.
Now, either somebody was trying to recycle, which we go back to our recycling, or I, you know, they took the warning of, don't bring it home. Mom does not want to see it. So, I don't know.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the Chromebook bid. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, great conversation.
Thank you.
Moving on to K, approval of the North Cedar Elementary Portable Relocation Bid.
And then we have another, there we go. As we know, we have to move a couple of portables from Orchard Hill this summer to make way for the construction project that's going to take place there. Those portables are going to be moved to North Cedar, and they will be housing staff primarily during the remodeling and addition project at North Cedar. We asked for quotes to do this work. This work includes the concrete piers that the portables will set on, all the utility hookups, ramps to and from the portables, and skirting and everything that you need to do to, to make the portable usable for staff and students. Does not include the actual moving of the port, unit itself, we've already issued that contract out for the firm to do that. So you see, we've got... So you see, we've got three quotes on the, on the screen. We would recommend to accept a quote, low quote from Cook Construction here in Cedar Falls, $68,700. Again, this is part of that North Cedar project budget, and they will start weather permitting as it's raining outside tomorrow.
Do, do I have a motion to approve the Cedar, the North Cedar Elementary Portable Relocation Bid?
I move to accept the bid of $68,700 from Cook Construction, Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the installation of two portable classrooms at North Cedar School.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Susan? I'm sorry, I thought you were going to say something. Nope, nope. Okay, Susan? Anybody? Okay. No questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item L on the agenda, approval of the board policy, second of two readings. Dr. Patti?
Yes. Last meeting, we had our first reading of board policies. The majority of these are the 500 series policies, as well as other, I believe, six other policies for update. One of the policies that garnered quite a bit of discussion at the last board meeting was Policy 503.4. We went back to, to work with our attorney to continue to revamp and revise that. And actually, the suggestion, suggestion came from Dr. Shaw. And what we've included within the first two paragraphs is to add wording that talks about that individual students and extracurricular activities, clubs, or fine arts performances. And the addition is, they serve as a more visible representative of the school district, because all of our students are visible. All of our students are, we believe, are held to high standards, but these individuals are held to a more visible representative status. So that was the additions to, to be able to include and clarify that policy. And, and the remainder of the policies, we believe, were in pretty good shape and updated from our attorney and the recommendation from Kristi Latta from Allers &amp; Cooney in Des Moines.
Is this the time to talk about grammar?
Please.
Okay.
If there's a grammar rule.
Yes, that grammar error, so I'm looking at page 45, second paragraph. Students participating in these activities, plural, serve as a more visible ambassador, singular. So we, our choices would be, a student participating in these activities serves as a more visible, or students participating in these activities serve as more visible ambassadors of the school and role models to other students.
We will get that corrected. Thank you. We had it that way first, and we changed it.
Yep.
To the latter. Perfect.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading with those changes?
I had one more question.
Yep.
Had we decided to take regulations out? Because we still have a regulation in there.
Just the regulations on some specific policies. So when it came to the, the health components, because that is a regulation that can change annually, the decision by the recommendation of our attorney was to take that out. But there are some regulations that we still need to have.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the board policies for their second of two readings with the changes that Dr. Shaw made?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan, seconded by?
Second.
Suzie. All in. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank again the policy committee. They spent several hours going through these and offering suggestions and recommendations. It's a lot of time, and certainly appreciate your guidance.
Thank you. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item M on the agenda, approval of the supervisors, managers, coordinators, transportation department, IT technicians, and a 12-month clerical 2017-2018 benefit package. Dr. Talbot?
Thank you. Just remind the board that over the course of the last several months, we've brought forward recommendations to, to reach agreement with a number of bargaining units, and you've acted on and adopted settlements with the Cedar Falls Education Association, Cedar Falls Educational Support Professionals, and also Teamsters. It's now time to bring forward a recommendation for employees that are not represented by a bargaining agreement. And so Cabinet recommends an average total package, which includes wages, insurance premiums, I-Pers, and FICA, an increase of 2.85 percent, with employee contributions to monthly single insurance premiums for the Select Two Plan to increase from $5 a month to $25 a month. The employees to whom the recommended increase will apply are 12-month secretary or clerical, our information technology service technicians, bus mechanic, bus garage mechanics, bus drivers, coordinators, managers, and supervisors.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the salary recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Suzie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Any questions or comments for Dr. Talbot? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Adrian. Moving on then to approval of the 2017-2018 administrative team salary and benefit adjustment. Dr. Patti?
Yes, and this is a recommendation that I'm making to the school board based on our administrator, and this is less superintendent due to the fact that's set separately by the school board. Not sure if that's a good sign or not. And the recommendation that I bring to the board tonight is a total package increase with insurance benefits of 2.5 percent. That is a compensation increase of 2.08 percent. And it does mean that the monthly contributions to Select Two Health Insurance Plan would increase to the $70 per month, which is certainly an increase from the past. We know that this is less than where we have settled with other bargaining units and/or other non-bargaining groups, but we believe that this is a very fair compensation, compensation package. And certainly, we are very appreciative of what our administrators do, and we want to make sure that they understand that and are valued for the work that they do.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this package?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Suzie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item O on the agenda, approval of a board member resignation and replacement. Dr. Patti?
Yes, we certainly are very sad and, but very appreciative of the tenure and work that Dr. Kenyon has given to students of the Cedar Falls Community School District over the course of the last 24 years. However, Dr. Kenyon is in a position to resign his seat, which we are extremely saddened about, but also completely understand as continued work goes on beyond the, the walls and borders of our school system and the walls and borders of Cedar Falls. Before I turn it over to Jim, I just want to, to talk a little bit about the process for replacing this position. Due to the fact that Dr. Kenyon is, is resigning effective the organizational meeting in September, that will mean we will have three four-year seats, three regular board seats up for election in September, and then one two-year board seat up for election in September. And that one two-year seat will be to fill the remainder of Dr. Kenyon's four-year term. So again, we are extremely grateful for the work, the guidance, the leadership that you provided our district over the course of the last 24 years. We will have recognition ceremony for all retiring board members in the future. But again, we want to just thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. Twenty, a quarter century ago, put it that way, then Superintendent Dan Smith asked me to consider this, and I was serving as president of the Chamber of Commerce at the time, didn't think I had time. I didn't realize how much time, I guess, you can commit. And so he gave us some guideline, gave me some guidelines, and several of those were that this is a policymaking board. We hire administrators and a superintendent to guide the district, and I, hopefully, I've honored that. Second thing was that you ask your questions before the board meeting and have them clarified to the best of your understanding. And third was no surprises. And I wanted to announce this early enough so that it could be, the normal chain of, of elections could be held. Several years ago, when the legislature, in their great wisdom, made these four-year terms, it really made it a difficult thing for some people to commit that extra year. And with most legislations, there is a good reason they do that, but there's also a downside. And the downside is four-year commitment. And so I've enjoyed serving the students, parents, and teachers of the community. And I will say this, that some of those seniors, that first year I was on the board, now are grandparents. And that's sort of time that you, you move on, and I, you know, we're in good hands with our, our board and our, our superintendent. I really will say and thank the community one more time for the miracle of 1999, when we passed the local option tax, which has really changed our district. And it is sure a lot more fun to be in a district that is growing in enrollment. And our finances are extremely under control. And example on the Chromebook deal tonight, you know, a quarter of a century ago, we would have not, Chrome was a bumper rather than a book. I will say, and our, we're working on this in, in the district now, the CAPS program, one of their, one of their things that they're working on, going to work on next year, is how to make Chromebooks available to all students, because there's still 20 percent of our students that don't have an internet access at home. And so that will be a, a great thing to work, look forward to. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we vote no, he has to stay, right?
We, we looked into that. Sadly, no.
Great question. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the board resignation from Dr. Kenyon?
I will regretfully move to accept.
Do I? Do I have a second?
I don't want to second that. Somebody else has to second that.
Let Jim second it if he wants to leave.
I'll second.
I just, Jeremy, we're, we're on this side, so no, I'm happy over by myself.
I've seen.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for all your time, Jim. I think it's.
Thank you, Jim. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to item P on the agenda, questions, comments, or concerns from board members?
When there, there's going to be a September election.
Yes.
So there will be two ballots, one where people choose three four-year board members, and a second ballot where people choose one two-year board members. Is that a correct statement?
Well, it'll be the same ballot, but two questions. So you will either have to elect, if you are interested in running for a school board seat, whether or not you want to run for the four, one of the three four-year terms or for the one two-year term.
Is it possible to run for both?
No.
Not legal? Okay.
So you have to select which one, which question you want to be on.
And so then voters will see a list of names, and it'll say, vote for one, and then they'll see a list of names, and it will say, vote for three.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
And I know we've asked, is that what year will it change till all the elections will occur with?
2019.
2019. And they'll occur with city or municipality?
Correct.
Correct.
So those will be November elections. So this will actually be our last election in September for board seats.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns from board members?
I just want to say thank you, so the community knows, for the board retreat again. We have a board retreat twice a year, and we get together with all the administrators, the cabinet. Andy does a good job, and we get caught up on the goals within each school and the successes and the things they're still working on. And it's an outstanding day together each time. And I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. And on all our administrators for, they put a lot of work into putting that together for us.
They do. They have a great amount of pride, just to highlight the things that they're working on and what are, and again, I say this quite often, we have the best staff in the world, and the impact that they have on our kids is immense.
And it's really fun to get, or need to get together and have it sort of put into a synopsis. You can just see the, well, they, and rightfully, they're, everyone's so proud of what the students are doing, what their staff is doing, what their teachers are doing, and it's a great chance to showcase that, and I just really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education enter into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered. When necessary, to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session, 2011 Code of Iowa, 21.5 LI, one I, whatever it is.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. And this needs, by Jim, and this needs to be a roll call vote.
Okay. Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
And Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, I would ask anybody not associated with the closed hearing to please leave the room. For those of you in the audience, at the conclusion of the closed hearing, we'll come back and open session and adjourn the regular open meeting.